Good evening, everybody. And welcome. This is the regular meeting of the Leonard Village Council. Today is Monday, no mistake. October 11th, 2021. We want to welcome everybody and also ask for your cooperation as we have a productive and fast meeting. We have a lot. Although we do have a lot to cover, I think we've got the information we need to make the decisions. So if you would, please rise for the flag to lead it to a brief invocation. For the last time from our trustee, Charles Sutherby. Thank you, Charles.
A flag to lead us. To the Father, and to the United States of America. And to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
General authority has to be here, plus this village, plus this board, and plus the businesses that we form. Great.
Okay, can we have a roll call for attendants of the village council?
President McDonald?
Here.
Mrs. Sutherby?
Yes.
Mrs. Arundel?
Yes.
Mrs. Swack?
Here.
Mr. Kennedy?
Here.
Okay, there's a forum for the council, and we'll look for the record that clerk Laurie Zellner and treasurer Devers are present. Council has before it the minutes of the regular meeting held September 13th, 2021. Are there any questions, changes, or corrections? If none, motion to approve them would be in order.
I'd like to motion that we approve the September 13th minutes.
Second.
There's a motion by trustee Arundel, and a second by trustee Kennedy to approve the minutes. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to approve the minutes of September 13th, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay, minutes are approved. The next item is the agenda for this evening. Council has received it. I think there's a couple copies floating around for everyone in attendance. Are there any questions, changes to the agenda?
I would like to just add, so for the signs that we put in, the electronic signs, would it be possible to get a speed limit sign attached to those poles as well?
Oh, okay. We could talk about it.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, is there anything else? If not, a motion to approve the agenda as amended would be in order?
I second.
I'll second.
Okay, upon a motion by trustee Sutherby and a second by trustee Kennedy?
Yes.
There's a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Any questions on the motion? If none, all in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay. Council has before it the treasurer's report for the month of September. Are there any questions, changes, or corrections on that? If none, a motion to approve and receive and file the report would be in order?
I'd like to motion to receive and file the treasurer's report.
I'll second.
Upon a motion by trustee Sutherby and a second by trustee Kennedy, the treasurer's report has been motioned for approval. Are there any questions on the motion? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. President McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mrs. Arundel?
Yes.
Mrs. Swack?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutherby?
Yes.
Okay, treasurer's report is approved, received, and filed. Next item of business is the accounts payable for the month of September. Are there any questions, corrections on the bills? If none, a motion to pay the bills, any amounts stipulated.
I would like to motion that we pay the general fund $8,521.18. Major at $24,503.98. And the amounts in power to $24,520.58 as paid. And locals, there are.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Arundel, a second by trustee Sutherby. Pay the bills and the amount stipulated. Any questions on the motion to pay the bills? If none, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Swack?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutherby?
Yes.
President McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mrs. Arundel?
Yes.
Very good. Those are paid. Okay. Next item on the agenda is our public comment. This is a chance for the public to address the village council. You don't, the public does not participate in the board's decision-making during the meeting. You're here regarding an item on the agenda for tonight, you have had the opportunity to speak while consideration of that item is being considered. Same time limits and rules apply during the conduct of new business, old business, and during the meeting. Please state your name and address for the meeting record after being recognized by the village president. Please direct your comments to the president and the board at that time. It is a three-minute time period at which time another person may address the village council and be recognized. So, would anybody care to address the village council? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to new business. The first item of business is actually involves two resolutions. The first is the village fee resolution amendment in which the village council established fees for professional services associated with processing applications and for insufficient funds checks. So where, I'll read the resolution. Whereas an amendment to chapter two of the code of ordinance of village of Leonard adopted by the village on August 9th, 2021, permits the village to collect fees related to professional consultations and insufficient funds checks, which ordinance became effective on, at eight? Oh, at 10 days, exactly, 10 days, whenever it's, effective on the publication, publishing, which was, I believe, filed on Wednesday.
On Wednesday, 22nd?
It comes effective when it's published. So that would be Wednesday after, obviously, should have filled it in. So that was Monday, so that would be 18th. 18th. So that would be effective on August 18th. Whereas the village of Leonard council has determined that it is necessary, appropriate, and efficient to adopt fees and charge professional service fees to applicants or petitioners seeking permits, reselling good appearances, special exception permits, approval of site plans, and any agreements, contracts, or proposals related there too, for the purpose of reinforcing the village for any and all special professional fees and expenses incurred by the village in the processing and consideration of such applications. Whereas the village council, the village of Leonard council has also determined that it is necessary, appropriate, and efficient to adopt a fee to charge a person for checks that are returned for insufficient funds. Whereas the village of Leonard council has ordained that said fees shall be established from time to time by resolution of the council, and the schedule of current rates and fees of the professional consultants shall be determined as the council. Now therefore be resolved that the council hereby establishes and adopts the attached scheduled fees for special professional fees and expenses incurred by the village in the processing and consideration of any application for charging a person for checks that are returned for insufficient funds, which schedule shall remain in effect until such time as it is rescinded or changed by further resolution of the council. So, this resolution refers to the resolution to adopt fees that the village council periodically reviews, and in this case, what will be added to it is an insufficient funds return check fee of $25, and a professional consultation fee. The village may require a fee for its professional consultation fees, special fees, and expenses as incurred by the village for the village attorney, village engineer, village land planner, and any and all other special services reviewed, required, processed, and considered the subject matter of an application, petition, contract, or other proposal. The professional consultation costs charged shall be in addition to whatever costs are charged by the village for permits, applications, registrations, licenses, et cetera, as set forth elsewhere in the fee schedule resolution. Costs shall be no more than the actual amount to be incurred by the village for said professional consultation. So with that said, the first, the first resolution, the first resolution which I brought in, which I referred to in the fee schedule, we're looking for a roll call vote for adoption of that resolution. Will the council put forth that?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt our resolution presented.
I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, upon a motion by trustee Kennedy and a second by trustee Arundel, the resolution to establish fees for professional services associated with processing applications and for insufficient funds checks is motion for approval. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, we have a roll call then, please?
Mrs. Sutherby?
Yes.
President McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Swack?
Yes.
Mrs. Arundel?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
All right, then, on the fee schedule itself, which is generally referred to as appendix A, because we just changed, we adopted a new, we're adding to that fee schedule, we need to re-adopt it. So, basically, this is the same language that we use as back in July, we re-adopted, we changed the fees back then for Freedom of Information Act and Open Meeting Act. So I will read it unless the council needs to waive the reading. Hearing that nobody wants to?
Well, this is just to say that we're just increasing the fees to $25, right?
Correct, and, right, and you-
It's the same thing that you just read just.
Yes, yeah, I read just pertinent portions of the fee schedule.
Right.
So, the question of the fee minimum, $25, is that feasible for all things? If that was to change to $30 and some, do we have to change it as well, or can we turn?
No, we, no, it cost us something.
Oh, I have to support that.
We have to pay the money for insufficient, so, no.
So it's a standard? I can motion for us to waive it because it's the same thing that you just read.
Right.
And-
Okay, so if there's a motion to waive the reading, is there a second?
I'll second, sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so upon a motion by trustee Arundel and a second by trustee Sutherby to waive the reading of the resolution to establish fees for services, permits, and applications, required security, and assessment of fines, the council will vote by roll call on the adoption of the resolution. So, all in favor of the motion to waive the reading?
Aye.
Close, please say no. Okay. Then, I will ask then for a motion and a second to adopt the fee schedule of appendix A, which is the types of fees and amounts indicated in that schedule.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. A motion on the floor to adopt a fee schedule as presented, are there any questions? Hearing none, we have a roll call then for those council members in attendance.
Mrs. Arundel?
Yes.
President McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Swack?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutherby?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried and resolutions are adopted. Okay. Next resolution is in regards to the village of Leonard's, village council who acts as the zoning board of appeals when such appeals are made by a person to the village. This, this resolution is similar to the ones that were adopted, or that were adopted by the planning commission for remote meetings, and it was adopted for ourselves as well. So this is basically the same thing, but since the council acts as a ZVA at times, we also were advised that we should adopt this for ourselves when we are acting as a ZVA. This is basically for the remote electronics meetings procedure. It involves procedures for conducting the meeting, participation by members of the ZVA or village council, notices that are required, and also provision that a member of the general public may participate or register to attend that electronically-held meeting. It's permitted to individual, most importantly, to participate in a public comment period of the meeting. So council, here again, would the council want me to read the whole resolution, or do we want to waive the reading?
I'd make a motion to waive it. I'll second that.
Okay, upon a motion by trustee Sutherby and a second by trustee Swack, there's a motion to waive the reading of the entire E-meeting resolution. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to waive the reading? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay, so now we'll hold on to the resolution itself. Council, need a motion and a second to adopt the resolution for procedures for electronic meetings and attendance for the zoning board of appeals.
I'd like to motion that we adopt the resolution for the Leonard Village zoning board of appeals for electronic meetings and attendance.
I'll second.
Okay, upon a motion by trustee Arundel and a second by trustee Kennedy, the adoption of the zoning board of appeals procedures for electronic meetings and attendance has been put up for a vote. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, we have a roll call then for approval of the motion.
President McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutherby?
Yes.
Mrs. Swack?
Yes.
Mrs. Arundel?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Very good. The resolution is adopted. Okay. Next item on the agenda is Elmwood Street drain slash Leonard School. As council members, you've probably either seen or heard about, there's a considerable drainage problem at Leonard School, at the driveway where it meets Elmwood Street. Now, this is not a new situation, but it has gotten much worse with time. I'm, I'm advised that there's always been a problem there, and usually was right around where Mr. Kennedy lives, on his, the part of, where the drains are, basically. They go to the, hook into the village system. But the school added a retention system and a larger pipe the last time they reduced the parking lot. And the result is, is that it overwhelms the ability of our village system to carry So Don Irwin, our PDW manager, and I are trying to find a way to address it. And the only, the only apparent way is to install a new drain and run east of, from the school drains and dump into the catch basins where the village, where East Elmwood Street, water from the streets flow underneath the street and into the pond there. Unfortunately, Don has not been able to find a contractor that's had the time to come out and give us an estimate. We are making plans to get a vacuum truck out to clean out the catch basins of those at the school and however many others as we can get done, which may, we may learn a little bit more in the meanwhile of why things are slow, but this weekend, Don and I went over on Saturday, Alex brought some help with him, and we opened up the catch basins and looked at them, and they're flowing, they just can't flow enough, that there's just so much water. We pumped, when we pumped it dry, when we pumped the catch basin where the village drain starts, when we stopped pumping, the water from the catch basins that are up in the parking lot, they actually have reservoirs up there, filled that back up. So it just takes days for it to flow out, it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen immediately. But I don't have anything to bring to you to say, we could, Alex suggested, we could try and get a TV camera in there and see where, what we have and where it goes and how good it is, but it's difficult to do under the conditions we have right now to throw all the water in there, so. And I'm not sure what the cost would be on, right now, we're looking at almost $4,000 just for the vacuum truck to come out. That doesn't include using a TV camera, which would probably be another day of work to come out, set up, and do. There are literally, it's like a spider web down there of drain tiles. The one, the one catch basin has three in it, one from the school property, which is, looks to be a 12-inch pipe. And then we have two pipes that go south and east that the maximum size is six and a half inches internally for one of them. So it's no wonder that we're, we have a problem there, it's just, our system is overwhelmed. And honestly, I don't know if there was an arrangement, if engineers, state law doesn't require schools to notify or have approvals from contractors on school property, so whether they hooked in illegally, they certainly hooked up a much larger pipe than had ever been there before for that much water to be coming into our system. So I'm trying to address it in the most efficient and effective way, but I'm very concerned that it's going to be very expensive because we spent nearly $20,000, and, but it was an open trench fix that we did over on Whitehead Street, probably about three years ago, you may remember. And this one's going, we're looking at about 400 feet of linear footage that we would have, we would have to hydraulically drill it underground. Open trench, just, it would be way too expensive, I think, for us to do, and we don't have the capability to do it ourselves. So I can't even give you an estimate right now, but I may, if I can get some quotes, I may call a special meeting because we can't go into winter, again, with this situation with that water, and if it freezes up, it'll destroy everything that we've got, so I just wanted to make everybody aware, and I'm open for suggestions, if you know somebody that, you know.
Have to look camera back.
Yeah. The county water resources commission does have that service, but I don't know if they'll do it for their own, for, for a drain that's not their own, they've done our county drains here in the village. So that is on my agenda, to contact them and see if I can, if we can avail ourselves of their equipment as well. So unless there's questions, I'll move on. Oh, yes.
Did the school notify you about that drain? I'm just curious.
I don't, I don't know that the village has ever gotten notification. We've been, we were notified recently by two contractors that did the asphalt work up there, that we had a water problem. And I basically told them, we don't have a water problem, the school has a water problem. We, we haven't changed anything in our drains, they've just created a situation where that much water doesn't have anywhere else to go but out into the street, up through the breaks.
I beg your pardon, the village does have a water problem. Seriously?
Well, I'm talking about at that point, at that-
But if you're gonna do that, what about the one right there on the vision that's been flooded for years?
Right now, we're talking about the school situation.
The school, I figure, okay, gotcha.
All right. So is there anything else related to the school that council wants to discuss?
Not really.
Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda, who sent the request of trustee Swack to discuss 4285 Forest Street? Do you want to say anything, or do you want, want me to? Anyone? Well, he sent me emails. Oh, my apologies, my apologies. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm not supposed to go, he's trying to top the line.
No, my apologies, trustee Arundel sent me the email. We have had dealings with this address and with the owners in the past, I didn't refer this to the village attorney and asked him if he could contact them, the owners, or give us advice on whether to start what I would recommend is a dangerous building's action whereby the village would force the owners to either remake all the repairs necessary to the property, or they would have to, we would, we would either, we would then have to determine what we wanted to do. If we condemn it, we would have to call the construction board together, which is basically five people in the building's trades and planning trades that are, live here in the township, and they don't have to live in the township, but it would be the same as what Anderson Township uses, same, same people. And they would have to take a look at the situation, and then we would have to go to court, it would be a circuit court action to force, force property owners to either fix it, or we would condemn it and it would be torn down. Very expensive, very time-consuming as well. The only option outside of that is the one you suggested, is if the attorney, if we can get, but they've been totally non-responsive, you know, tools.
I understand, I'm just thinking if we give them an out saying donate that property to the village, and we would tear it down, such as, you know, we can look at different avenues for that, but then we turn it into a parking lot for a while or something, just so, you know, people aren't getting hurt, and it doesn't look like an eyesore coming into the village.
Well, that's certainly something that the attorney could propose on the bus.
So maybe they're willing to donate it so we can let it off on their taxes and-
I mean, I think that's on the market, but you know how.
I'm just, I'm kind of think outside the box with them, since they're such a different company to try and work with, that maybe if they could just donate the property to us, if they donate it, maybe we could wait for the cleanup, that we did for the cleanup. Well, no, I'm trying, I'm trying to entice them to move so we can do something, so, because I also think we need to do something to secure that board.
Do they pay the taxes on that property?
It's, I couldn't actually say this year yet, just curious, how previous years are paying.
It's not, I don't believe it's listed as a-
Delinquent.
Delinquent property, so at least in the last three years, they must have paid something.
I was gonna say, it's not been delinquent prior, so.
Okay, well, does the council want to take a vote, or do you want me to just continue with the village attorney and have him- and have him approach, if he can, if anybody will respond regarding the possibility of donation to the village? And/or further action, like the, you have to delve in one hand and the hand, the hand or another and say, if not, we're gonna go condemnation. If the council's comfortable with that, that's how we'll proceed.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we proceed with the attorney to approach with one of two options. One, as donation, the other is condemnation.
Okay, so we have a motion by trustee Kennedy and a second by trustee Swack to direct the village attorney to enter into negotiations with the owners, offering them an opportunity to donate or...
Or fix it.
Or fix, or donate it or... Fix leave.
I think we want to give them an option to fix it. And it's, I don't think it's fixable anymore inside.
I don't know.
Especially with the holes in it. And the animals that are living in there and whatever else is in there.
Okay, so donate or tear it down. That's it. That's what we will go with. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to initiate... Yes, trustee Swack.
Sorry.
To have the village attorney approach then regarding status of the structure and whether they would be willing to donate it to the village or face condemnation pursuant. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay, moving on. This is probably the most important item in this one. Halloween trick-or-treat day and time. I'm recommending to the council, I checked with the township of Oxford. Surprisingly, I learned that the village of Oxford doesn't set day and time strictly, they go by the township. So their plan is to do it Sunday, October 31st. I believe it's from 6:00 to 7:30 over there, so I'm recommending to our council that we do it on Sunday, October 31st at our usual time from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. But that's up to the council.
So you're gonna make a motion to set trick-or-treat time for 2021, Sunday, October 31st from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m.?
On Sunday.
Motion by trustee Kennedy, second by trustee Swack, or somebody to have Halloween, October 31st, 2021, at 6:00, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to set trick-or-treat time and day as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. I did learn that the fire department is not going to have the normal Halloween party that they have always staged. However, they will be present downtown distributing candy and treats for the community. Okay, here's another good one. Christmas tree lighting celebration, day and time. I really don't know anything about this, so I'm relying on Jennifer.
Okay. For the Christmas tree lighting celebration, we're doing it Friday, December 3rd. Starting it from probably 6:30 to 9:00, I'd like to request that the street is shut down during that time.
What part of the street?
In front of here, like from the corner.
Okay.
Over. We'd like to get some burn barrels and have some smorgasbades is what we're working on, donations right now. I also have the J D B band has volunteered to come and carol outside for us. So we'll actually have a small band out there. Inside, we're going to have the Oxford Middle School Orchestra that we had a couple of years ago when we did it. We'll be playing inside. So inside, I was hoping if we, we're also looking for if we can come up with a dessert food truck. If we can't, then doing our normal cookies and hot chocolate inside. Let's see. We also to help to change things up this year. We'd like to do, the decorating committee would like to do a gingerbread house contest. So what that would be is that they would have to sign up on the 11th of 20th. We have two categories, the children's group and then the adult 18 and over that can participate in it. And then the voting would occur, we'd set them up in here, and then the voting would occur by the residents. And the residents could buy like a raffle ticket and deposit on which ones that they like the best. And then that money that they're buying this raffle ticket would then go and support the decorating committee's fund. So, and then we would announce the winners that evening on pin one, the adult and then the child on gingerbread. We already have donations for the prizes. So for some really great places locally, so... And then just, you know, the rules, the rules would be that it has to be made out of gingerbread or breadcrumbs. It has to be made out of food, except for the platform mix itself. No nuts, because there's so many allergies. Structures aren't really limited to a house, it could be anything, be creative. Besides, the platform itself can't be more than 20 inches by 20 inches that they put it on. So platform could be maybe phone board, whatever they want to carry it on. And we had it all set up prior to the Christmas tree event. So that is one thing that the decorating committee would like to do. We're also have additional three Christmas trees we're gonna put up down here in the village. And we've already spoken to Leonard Elementary. And the kids are going to make ornaments and come down as a field trip for them, let's say, if they're gonna make and decorate the three trees. And then we're getting a main tree and we're working on the donation for that right now.
But the, the children from school would not be part of this, would they? I'm not sure if I'm...
The, okay, the children are gonna make the ornaments, they'll come down one day and they'll decorate the three trees that we have up. So we're gonna do three trees down here that'll just light up and open it up. And it's something to try and bring in the village, working with the school and bringing in some connectivity with that.
Is this using the fake trees or...?
This is using the fake trees that we have donated. Because last year at the end of Christmas, I asked for any donations. So those three fake trees will be put up around town and then decorated. So again, just trying to kind of bring some more community involvement and making this a little bit of a bigger production this year for us. Let's see. So we, yeah, we probably have to close the street from, let's say, 5:30 to 9:30. Because we're looking at trying to run it from 6:30 to, they'll probably go from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. Because we're gonna allow the voting to start at 6:30 to 8:30 for the gingerbread houses. That should give people plenty of time and hopefully get a good turnout. We'd like to put the gingerbread franchise schools and entry on our site on the 11th of July. And then it'll be sent to the schools too, the one to send out.
Okay. If you provide the content for what you want, that'd be, we can raise to get it on the road.
Yeah, I'll just send it over to Alex on Sunday into a PDF.
If he's willing to do it.
It's actually done. So...
Okay.
So that's what I'm looking for is for all of that to move forward with the Christmas tree celebration.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the council? We're talking Christmas tree lighting and celebration on Friday, December 3rd. Questioning that the street could close from 5:30 to 9:00 p.m., that would be how?
To 9:30.
To 9:30?
It just buys us an extra 30 minutes since we're gonna have a vote come on.
Okay. And then we would close East Elmwood Street from Rochester Road to Forest Street to Division Street on the east, which is basically what we do when we have strawberries for that portion. Okay, what's the pleasure of the council?
I'd like to bring a motion to close East Elmwood Street from Division to Forest Street on Friday, December 3rd from 5:00 to 9:30 p.m.
Okay, that's 5:00 to 9:30?
Correct. I'll close out on that side as well.
You have a trustee Sutterby?
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion by trustee Kennedy, the second by trustee Sutterby, to set Friday, December 3rd from 5 o'clock to 9:30 as the Christmas tree lighting celebration and to also close East Elmwood Street from Forest Street to Division Street on the east. Any questions on the motion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay.
I can't agree with other additional thing with that.
No, I think you're done.
With the celebration and stuff, I will need an allocation of some monies just to make sure we've got the decorations and things for Christmas aid for, if I want to take this outside for all the planters and then inside for setting up the tables and stuff for the gingerbread house contest. So the good thing is, is that we had some great donations for the fall for all our health decorations. So the cost wasn't, was less than half of what was allocated to the decorating committee that was used. So I'm looking probably for at least, if I want the trees and probably everything in, probably 300. Hoping that I get donations again. So I already have an extra 150 from the fall that I didn't use. So you're, 125, I think, if I'm precise enough, approximately.
So you're wanting 300 in addition to what you already have, is what you're saying?
But right now, beautification budget is at, not to labor, is at $3,000, of which $2,566.12 has been spent. Labor has been hoisted expenditure, so... You really need us to do anything? I mean, you've got to...
No, I don't need you to do anything. I just need approval that I can spend up to 300 dollars in acquiring...
300 dollars would be within your budget?
Right, it's within my budget. I just want to make sure that I have approval.
Does that include the acquisition of the Christmas tree or...?
No, it does not. I'm hoping that it's...
It's been donated in the past.
It's been donated in the past, so I'm hoping it'll be donated down. Um...
Well, you, you have, you have more than, more than enough. There's enough in the budget, so it's up to the council. Somebody wants to make a motion to authorize an amount within that budget, I don't see any problem with that. Okay, I'll make a, I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion, can I spend the money?
I'll make a motion to authorize the decorating committee to expend up to 300 dollars for Christmas expenses.
Okay, thank you.
And remember, we have a meeting in November, so if anything comes up, I can address it once again. Okay, that's my motion. Okay, motion by McDonald, second by trustee Swack to authorize up to 300 dollars for use on Christmas tree lighting related expenses. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, we have a roll call because it involves expenditure.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mrs. Arrindel?
Yes.
Mrs. Swack?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutterby?
Yes.
President McDonald?
Yes. Very good. Motion carried. Good luck.
Thank you.
Better start early.
I've never been already, so, so it's in the committee, so there are great teams.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is Roland Hall Stairway heat situation. We, I did contact our village mechanical inspector and he suggested a HVAC company, Young, to ask him to come and look at our situation. For those that don't know, we have two heating systems and cooling systems in the village. One, there's a furnace and an air conditioning for the office area. And then for this area downstairs, it's heated by another unit that has both capabilities. The rec, the, the company, Young, now I had it two seconds ago, thank you. We had talked about having one vent put in. They were a little leery of that. They suggested two because this, this hall sometimes only gets heated once, heated, heated once, once a month, maybe twice at the most. For our meeting, especially in the wintertime, we don't, we don't get more than like Christmas now, so we'll have two or three heating days, which doesn't turn the heat on very often. Upstairs, since the village offices are open three days a week, it would help to supplement between the two of them, it would, it would work. But we can choose to do only one. It would probably help, but, you know, I defer to the people that its job is to figure these things out. So Young said that they would furnish and install a heat or two heat branch ducts to the first floor stairwell, including the registers. That is for $450. In other words, they would come off of our ducts, go through the wall, I think they'd go around the corner and then through the wall above the doorway. And then on the second floor, they would furnish and install an eight-inch branch run for heat to the second floor. So you have heat low and heat high alternatively. And then we don't, but it would not have a thermostat, so it would don't, it would rely on when this, this room calls for heat and for when the village offices call for heat, which we do set the thermostats down, down here, it's 60, 63?
We want usually 55. Unless it's gonna be really cold out there, we'll turn it up.
So are there any questions regarding, that makes for a total of...
Their recommendations would be the same.
$970. Yeah, and there was, it made sense. I mean, one, one run into that, into that, you know, everybody knows how cold that gets in there. I mean, it literally frosts up in the wintertime. So between the two sources, even, even when these are set at a low temperature, they're still gonna get some heat up there. So, but we did have, for Roland Hall... I'm only playing.
It said the building was a burn.
Pardon?
The building was a burn.
Yeah.
It's already over budgeted.
Yeah, for Roland Hall, maybe it's Roland Hall that's, um, but we may, depending on general labor.
Creative account.
Yeah, well, it's either, we either find it within the current budget or we have to-
Right.
take it out of the comp reserves for this. And frankly, I think it's probably long overdue. I mean, uh-
Right, I think we do.
Because there's damage occurring, partly because of the roof, but also because of the cold, so.
That's another item.
So, what's the pleasure of the council? Now, if you want me to get additional quotes, I can, but I-
You had other people comment, didn't you?
I had a couple of people look at it. Never, I didn't get, yeah. And I didn't call Smothers, and that was the one that somebody had mentioned. I didn't get a hold of it. Mainly because our inspector said this, these people do good work, so. So what's the pleasure of the council? Do you want more?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize up to 970 dollars for the installation of heating into the stairwell of Roland Hall.
I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, motion by trustee Kennedy, second by trustee Erandale, authorize up to 970 dollars for the installation of stairwell and second floor heat branches for Roland Hall. Any question on the motion? Is there a second? There is a second movement. Okay, any questions? Here you go, none. We have a roll call, just.
Mrs. Swack?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutterby?
Yes.
President McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Erandale?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
I'll notify them that we need to get to work on that. Next item is number eight, which is the DPW work platform and pallet forks. I did some getting solicited quotes, et cetera. Looks like to properly outfit an OSHA approvable system using our village tractor, we would have to purchase pallet forks and a, and a work platform, which are two separate items. The John Deere forks are about 1,500 dollars. And those have a 5,500 pound capacity. Not that the tractor does, but I mean, they're very, they're heavy duty. And then the, a, a platform produced specifically for this use, a four by six platform is about 1,500 dollars. So we're looking at 3,074 dollars if we want to have that capability. There are some training and regulations that go along with it. It is an enclosed platform. It is, the tractor that you can raise the mower personnel, but you cannot travel with them in the platform. They do have to wear harnesses if they're over 16 height. But beyond that, it's actually a pretty standard activity in the construction industry to use similar, similar equipment. Pros for doing it is it gives us the capability to safely raise a mower, not only personnel, but Christmas decorations, things like that. Get to the roof for roofs of our structures, some of our structures if we need to. Cons is, is it, it is expensive. It's a, it's a, something we use occasionally. Regularly, if you look at Christmas and maybe pole, pole painting, you know, things like that. I mean, it, it can make a big difference in our ability to address those things, but I'm, I'm, we leave it up to the village council how far we want to go if we want to dive into that capability.
What's the budget? I have other new equipment and there is money.
Yeah, there is money.
We've got 10,000 budget in the wall we use for 333.
And at this point, you aren't anticipating buying the other, you know, we take that money for it?
Right, I, I had not planned on buying, buying this. I, in fact, that's why we only budgeted 10,000 dollars in this category. And for the last 10 years, we've always put 20,000 in there. But we don't anticipate having to knock on wood, buy any new equipment, you know, nothing major, so. So this would be something, you know.
Would we be able to get it before Christmas?
That I can't tell you. On the tractor force, yes. On the work platform, I haven't talked directly to the company. Such a tight platform, it's pretty well known.
Do you know the pricing included shipment order?
Yeah, I don't know if you're, I think the, we could pick out the forks because it's from the same vendor we bought the tractor from. But all I did was did an online quote for the-
Did you ask them if they got a discount for the availability?
Yeah, it's called tax, no sales tax.
Well, sometimes if you go like I've gone and I've asked her, they've been able to work with us.
I, when I talk to them, I will definitely try and find that out. But, but I, I, I would really be just guessing if I tried to provide a, provide a number. In fact, the platform is a, well, it says here, four by six telehandler work platform, man safety basket, foot lift attachment, safety cage. It's 1,499 dollars and 99 cents. And it's free delivery, October 22nd to November 2nd.
In the long, in the long run, do you see, that's saving us a lot more time with going around cleaning up the banners and other stuffs and?
Time and money and effort.
And safety.
And safety. And that's the thing, is Don has put up flags year round, taken them down, the banners, up and down. That's all difficult work to do.
Right.
And for the latter. So, it could be a game changer from that point of view.
I'd like to make a motion that we spend up to 3,300 dollars for a fork, for forks for the tractor and the four by six work platform. And any necessary safety gear if we have to buy harnesses or anything else.
I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, a motion's been made by trustee Kennedy, that's the second by trustee Erandale, to authorize up to 3,300 dollars for the purchase of pallet forks and a work platform for the village DPW track.
And any necessary safety gear. I want to make sure that we have that. Because they do have an expiration date, so I think the harnesses last five or six years and then they have to replace them.
Okay. Okay, so that is, is everybody clear on the motion? Any questions? Okay, here you go, none. We have a roll call vote for authorization?
Mrs. Sutterby?
Yes.
President McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Swack?
Yes.
Mrs. Erandale?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Motion here. Okay, my side on the new business was trustee Kennedy, speaking on the signs?
Yeah, so one of the things that brought to my attention, and then also I've noticed a lot more from driving through different communities, is when they have these electronic signs. And I'm referencing the speed limit sign, platform that we put up at the mill and then also the fire department. They also generally have another speed limit sign on them. So I'm not sure what the cost is for a speed limit sign, but that may be a worthwhile investment because if you go past those signs, there's a sign before and a sign after, but I'd also like to make sure that people can see what the speed limit is when it's telling them that they're going to pass.
I did, I did speak with the sheriff about that when we installed them. And he's, he was indifferent whether we had it or not. And he said it's already signed uniquely, you know, there's enough, the speed limit signs are adequate that we have. But I don't, it just requires drilling four hole, two holes in each pole out. I don't have an objection.
Do we know what the cost is for signs?
I've already got it.
Okay.
I bought them and we put that all together to make sure we had 35 mile an hour, 25.
Because for the most part, they're ignoring it.
Uh, I think, I've seen people slow down when they get close to it.
I watched the other, speed up.
Yeah, there's some people that really, they leave the corner here, it's like a drag race. Yeah, so.
There was just some parents at the school that said, well, what is this speed limit? They already see the sign out here. People don't even pay attention. And so, I mean, I'll say, I'll see them drive by and I'll say, you know, you guys are going really fast. Because I know who it is. And they'll say, well, what is this speed limit? And that sign doesn't really tell you what the speed limit is. It just says, slow down. Or it goes green when you're going the speed limit. But nobody knows what the speed limit is because they don't look at the signs.
Yeah, it's definitely.
Sure, if you have those items, we hope sometimes it's convenient and it can help put them up.
Okay, thanks everyone. Yeah, it doesn't really require any action, it's just rolling, we do that. Okay, under old business, Leonard Mill. As you may have noticed, the foundation stones have been repaired. Everything's level, ready for the next repairs for the floor and the exterior. I got, I should say, the village received an email yesterday, or Friday. A running club has offered a donation of 2,500 dollars. If, if I'm willing to meet them at the Pollyanna Trail. They've had a fundraiser amongst their members to raise 2,500 dollars for the mill, so.
Wow.
I just have to get up early on a Sunday morning to go up there and meet them. So I think that will be taking place on October 20th, or whatever that Sunday is that week, probably.
The 17th?
The 17th. The opposite of 17th?
I would have only worn the 24th.
That sounds, I thought it was.
The 20th or something.
Yeah, I'd let the council know for sure. But that was very generous, so as you saw when our village paid, we paid for the foundational repairs and we're hopefully getting a donation, so that's, that's all positive.
Do they have any expectations of what the donation will go for?
No, they just, they said they just, they just like it, they thought it would be a worthwhile investment. They gave them a reason to, I guess they run in Leonard every, every, run down the Pollyanna Trail every, every Sunday. I'm kind of assuming that. They didn't say, but they, they're regulars out here, let's put it that way. And then roofing update, they pushed us back to October 22nd. Basically due to the weather we had at the beginning of the month. So I'm doing the best I can with what I've got.
I'm back to the mill. Yeah, third time, I didn't know they were done. You do realize there is a huge hole open? Where a kid could get in there easily.
Yeah, we're in the process of addressing that. We've got to get the stone and everything cleared out and we'll get that, that part of it.
I think there'll be some part of plywood or something because that's very complicated.
Yes. Yep, I agree. Moving on, DPW. Don has done all the winter prep work that needs to be done on the tractor and the truck. He's got two loads of salt. We've ordered 100 tons from the county for the winter, which usually is enough. They've changed their system a little bit, so we have to guarantee to buy 80 tons minimum. And then we can buy up to 100 at that price. And then if we need more salt, we can get 30% more, but that's it. So we can theoretically get, I think, tons of the cover, 130 tons here we pay. We should be outside.
Also, like since these kids are prepared, can we point out this thing to change out the banners? The winter banners?
Okay, anytime?
November, anytime after November 1st.
Okay.
Before, before things begin. Most people just like.
Okay.
By this time we get it on the radar.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, from my report, we have no freedom of information, act requests, ordinance enforcement. Nothing active right now. We had no community develop, no new community development block grant applications. I'm hopeful that we'll get to go ahead on our reallocation a month ago on the money so that we can proceed. I still haven't heard from the county that, that we can spend that money. So, American Rescue Plan. I guess I'll roll this into the census report as well. Village actually declined their population significantly. The, we went from 407 or 403 residents in 2010 to 377 in 2020, which is a loss of 26 residents and a negative 6.5%, which really does affect the village significantly because of our revenue sharing, a lot of the grants and everything that we apply for in all manners. The only possible upside right now is that our median income level will remain where it is and we may still be qualified for grants or forgiveness if we buy our money for a sanitary sewer system. So I'm trying to find the bright side of that. I really, and our, 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 American Rescue Plan monies were based on 410, I believe. So we're significantly under that, so instead of 42,000, well, let's see. We were originally on there for 42, 42,809 dollars. I think we're actually now looking at 40,240 dollars, so just because of that population change. But there's not really a lot more data available yet. We'll keep, we'll keep that in mind. Also, of the American Rescue Plan, the Department of Treasury is saying that they, within two weeks, they're hoping to have that money available so we can apply to, to get actually good. Okay, I wanted to let the council know and the community that, as we all know, Dan and Shara are moving away from us. But they, they, since in their time here, they have donated many historical items to the village. We've got records and items, in fact, we've got some fire department equipment and things that they generously gave to us and they didn't have to. So I wanted to publicly acknowledge it and thank, thank you, Dan, for, for sharing it with us. And we'll, we'll hold it, take good care of it. Okay, moving on then to the trustee committee reports. I don't think we have anything for the summer president committee at this point. Cable commission, nothing there. Decorating committee, are there anything else we need to be aware of?
No, I just like to make sure, you know, we thank our, we've had, like I said, lots of donations from picnics, for pitching.
The thank yous of the sun.
Yeah.
Continue if you do, continue sending me who needs.
And locally here, yes.
Have you thought of maybe, or maybe done this, put something up on both of ours, say, in the post office, suggesting that the community support them because they have supported your committee?
I think that's a good idea.
That is a positive.
Yes.
It really is. It really is.
I can ask the gentleman. But yeah, and I just wanted to make sure. My decorating committee has been very active in trying to, the village, look, and sort of trying to practice for
And it's been a...
for the holiday, so I want to put a shout out to them to say thank you.
There will be a planning commission meeting this month, it'll be on the twenty-fifth, I believe, which is not the regular meeting night. And that's about it. Pollyanna Trail Management Council, there's a meeting next Wednesday. They're just getting ready for winter. Everything's starting to get easier following, et cetera. So not much going on there. Village Park, as I said, Mike, Ryan, his health isn't good enough. So probably we'll just try and winterize things, put some fencing up on some of them. Parker, Heidi, trying to save for the year.
You could use some bomb too, if you know anybody looking for something that you're involved in. The park would be a good place.
We also have that fence that needs to be removed there.
Yeah, I can't find the keys, but the cable.
Oh, okay, I didn't go to cable down.
Yeah.
Okay.
And finally, the community development block grant report. Still doesn't show our reallocation, but that will let you follow along after it's actually, we're able to actually use that money.
This number.
Oh, this number? They've purchased two new, and you may have noticed them, but they're not conventional vans. They're kind of a different looking vehicle. They seem to be working out really good. They accommodate wheelchairs real well, from what I understand, so that's why they really like them. But I think, yeah, we just, we set a new budget, I think, next, not, Addison won't be voting next year in the next election, but Orion and Oxford, their village is going to be coming up a year before August. Meanwhile, they're still considering becoming an Act 156 authority. Let's see what happens with that. And that's really all I have. That's all of our trustee committee reports. Didn't have any correspondence. It's a pleasure of the council.
Maybe the motion gets there.
Sorry.
Want to be a harder one? Okay, I'm in favor of the motion to the jury. Please say aye.
Aye.
On phones, please say the same, at the same time. Okay, where's your? Thank you, Sharon, for preparing us.